Hi Lindsay, can I do a mic check real quick?
Hi Siri, I can hear you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
And I'm in DC and I do not have my camera, so I'm here and you can see my photo, but I'm gonna just be a voice today, so hopefully we'll get the rest of the board together here and we can start here in just a minute.
Hello everyone, Herona Mavaskas just saying hi, mic check. I can't put my camera on.
We can hear you and we can see you.
Alright, cool. I'll turn my camera off now, but once we get started, I'll turn it back on.
Okay, thank you.
And I see we have the vice chair and myself. I don't see any other board members, is that correct?
That is correct. Andrew just told me that Judy may join by phone just in the beginning, so I'm keeping an eye out for Judy and I do not see Supervisor Fowler yet.
And Matt hopefully is gonna be on for the beginning, is that correct?
Correct, he's gonna try. A mic check for you Gregory.
Mic check.
We're good, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Can someone text Lena and Judy just to make sure, cuz we're gonna need at least one of them to have a quorum.
Do you have Supervisor Big Gay here? Just trying to pull her over.
Thank you. Lindsay?
I can hear you.
Just wanted to test.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Right, thank you.
And I do see Andrew McGuire on.
Excellent, thank you.
We do have Supervisor Fowler on, just pulling her over. Supervisor Big Gay, do you wanna check your mic and camera and Supervisor Fowler, do you wanna check your mic and camera?
One, two, three, this is Lena.
Four, five, six, this is Patrice.
We know how to count. It must be a wonderful day then.
It must be, so I'm sitting here Washington DC and I'll tell you, it was a beautiful day today, just gorgeous. But I don't have a camera on this computer, so you're just gonna have my photo unfortunately, but I'm here.
You are gonna be smiling through the whole movie. The whole movie show here.
Like it or not. Alright, well it is six o'clock straight up here, three o'clock straight up there in Arizona. And I see that we do have a quorum and so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order and today, members of the board, members of the public, is a special session and a tentative budget adoption here and some other business that we have to do on behalf of the county. And today's date is June 6th and our first order of business is a call to order. And my name is Patrice Horseman and I am the Chair of the Board of Supervisors and I am the Supervisor for District 1. District 2.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome and thank you for being here. My name's Herona Mavaskas, I'm Supervisor for District 2 and current Vice Chair.
And District 3 is not on yet. I think he's gonna try to join us. Matt Ryan is in Albuquerque and he is speaking on behalf of the county at a I don't know the correct title of it. Steve, what is the correct title for the group he is speaking in front of? It's a national organization.
It's an astronomical organization. They're speaking on the dark sky ordinance and other related items.
Yeah, so he's doing important work for us. District 4. District 4 Supervisor Big Gay, are you on?
Let me go check on that.
Alrighty, and I'll move forward. She shows that she's on, we can't hear her, so I'm gonna move on. District 5.
And in a beautiful sunny day, thank you.
Alright, District 5.
District 5.
Supervisor Fowler is with us and we'll see if we have verification on Supervisor Big Gay, but we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Our next item of business is to honor our nation through the Pledge of Allegiance. And with that, I'm gonna ask those who can to please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance and our clerk is going to put up the flag and also the pledge, so let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you. And we're moving along on our agenda and our next order of business is the call to the public. Members of the community, this is a time where you, members of the public, can address any items of concern, any items that are not listed on the agenda. If you have a comment or a question, now would be the time. During the call to the public portion, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and of course, this is an open public meeting. So we ask that you remain civil. And, and you know, if you have questions or concerns, we, the board, can't really answer them at this point because they are not included as part of our agenda and the open meeting law does not allow discussion on items that haven't been put on the agenda. However, we can refer them to our staff or we can ask that they be put on a upcoming board meeting and and placed on the agenda so we can discuss them more fully. So members of the public, now is the time for you to be able to join us and with that, I'm gonna turn this over to our clerk, Lindsay Daly, to explain to the public how you can join us. So Lindsay.
Thank you Chair Horseman. At this time, and I just wanna note that Supervisor Big Gay did join us by phone, so she is on.
Alright.
At this time, if anyone would like to make a comment, they can hit the raise hand icon that will appear towards the bottom of your screen if you hover towards the bottom. Says raise hand and looks like a hand. If you click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. If you've joined the meeting by telephone, you can hit star nine and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak.
Alright, thank you.
And we have no hands raised.
Alright, members of the public, this is last call. You have another opportunity. We are asking that if you have comments or questions, whatever, with the board, now would be your time to join us. And we know how you can, so one final call to join us on call to the public.
And there are still no hands raised Chair Horseman.
Then with that, we will go ahead and we are going to move along on our agenda items. We have two very important proclamations and so pleased that we are going to be taking these up tonight. The first proclamation is a consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating June 30th 2023 as asteroid day here in Coconino County. And as we all know, we are the proud home of Lowell Observatory, discoverer of our favorite planet Pluto. And I believe we have with us some members of Lowell, is that correct? And if so, wanna make sure that we promote them to panelist. Lindsay, do we have any members of Lowell? I know they were talking about joining us.
Yes, I am looking for Kevin. I see a hand up. There we go, Amanda's here, promoter. There we go, Amanda is here. Amanda, if you want to unmute, turn on your camera.
Hey, here I am, thank you.
There you go. Hi Amanda, thanks for joining us. And is Kevin with us as well?
No, unfortunately, he can't make it today.
We're glad you're with us and so what we're going to do is I will go ahead and read the proclamation, at which point the board, I would take a motion from the board and a vote. And then we're gonna turn it over to Amanda to basically talk about some exciting things with Lowell on asteroid day that will be coming up. And then we'll open it up to the board members for comments. So with that, if I may, it's my honor to read the proclamation designating June 30th 2023 as asteroid day. Whereas asteroid 2939 Coconino, discovered in 1982 by Lowell Observatory astronomer Ted Bowle, is that how you pronounce it?
Bowle.
Bowle, thank you, is named after Coconino County. And whereas longtime Coconino County resident Gene Shoemaker is considered the father of both planetary geology and the study of near earth objects. And whereas Gene Shoemaker and his wife Carolyn co-discovered more than 500 asteroids and 32 comets. And whereas the near earth asteroid rendezvous space probe, which landed on an asteroid to study it in 20, and in 2000, was named near Shoemaker in honor of Gene Shoemaker. And whereas scientists have used the Lowell Discovery Telescope, which is one of the most powerful telescopes and located 40 miles southeast of Flagstaff near Happy Jack to study asteroids and in 2022 confirmed the youngest pair of asteroids in the solar system. And whereas scientists at Lowell Observatory and Northern Arizona University play key roles in NASA's planetary defense efforts such as the DART mission. And whereas upwards of a half of million people visit Meteor Crater and Lowell Observatory each year. And the income generated from the visitation provides jobs and stimulates the economy of Coconino County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Coconino County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim June 30th 2023 as asteroid day in Coconino County. And we encourage all county staff and community members to join the county in celebrating Meteor Crater, Lowell Observatory and the exploration of our universe. And it's signed and sealed this sixth day of June. And with that, members of the board, and in recognition of the important role the Lowell Observatory and Meteor Crater has played here in Coconino County, I would ask for a motion for accepting this proclamation and designating June 30th as asteroid day.
So move.
I have a motion by Supervisor Fowler, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Vice Chair. All those in favor of the proclamation and designating June 30th as asteroid day, please say aye. Alright, it is now and this year going to be known as asteroid day. So Amanda, thank you from joining us here and I'm gonna turn this over to you cuz I know you've got some very interesting events coming up that will be of interest to the board and our county and to all of our residents. So please, I'm gonna turn this over to you Amanda.
Thank you Chair Horseman and thanks to everybody for this proclamation, celebrating asteroid day on June 30th. As a, I just want to also just express my thanks to, you know, Meteor Crater for working with us jointly on this particular on this particular day and the events that we have planned. We have some joint, joint events planned for both places Meteor Crater and Lowell Observatory and I think that if anybody has the ability to come to, to the site and you know, go to Lowell Observatory and/or Meteor Crater, they will learn a lot about the impact that literally and figuratively that asteroids may have had on the on the Coconino County area. Literally in, at Meteor Crater where that was hit by a fragment, a small asteroid. And then just figuratively because of all the work that has happened at Lowell Observatory, Northern Arizona University, the Naval Observatory to study these bodies in our solar system. Asteroid Day is a worldwide event as well and it really aims to try to bring awareness of you know, of what asteroids are out there and what the asteroids can do you know, to impact life on earth. And I think this is a very important topic for all of us. So I'm looking forward to asteroid day this, this year and to working with Meteor Crater to you know, bring this knowledge to lots of people. So thank you again for this proclamation and I, and I do hope that we will see lots of people at these events.
Supervisor Big Gay is actually on behalf of the board going to be reading the proclamation, I believe, out at Meteor Crater and will be taking part in some of the Lowell's. I'll be out of town, but I'll be there in spirit. And so pleased, I know many of us knew Gene and Carol Shoemaker and given the fact of their incredible role that they played here in discovering on asteroids and and you know, obviously near earth objects, it's really wonderful that we get to recognize them as well as these two wonderful institutions on our asteroid day proclamation. And Amanda, thank you and the staff at Lowell for all you do. We so appreciate you and certainly appreciate what an incredible role Lowell Observatory has played here in Flagstaff and in Coconino County in our history. Really appreciate that, so.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks to everybody.
And I'm gonna ask other supervisors that they'd like to make some comments.
Sure, I'll go next since you always choose me anyway. Hello, thank you. Excited for, for this proclamation. It's really exciting to see that we recognize such an important economic driver for us, both Lowell Observatory and Meteor Crater. You know, and it kinda shows the importance of dark skies and why we wanna honor this legacy and continue to promote dark skies and astronomy to future generations. And so just really excited to be able to be part of this and I had the, had the pleasure of last year being part of the proclamation in person at Lowell and it was a cool experience and I look forward to hearing all about it for the next one. So congratulations and I look forward to celebrating asteroid day moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair. Other comments Supervisor Fowler?
Yes, well, thank you. What a history, just that alone in Coconino County. Just amazing, just the, and this shows why dark sky is so important and why we have, you know, our ordinance. And just really being mindful of our environment and I like that, I like the, what they say, you know, the the dinosaurs didn't see the asteroids coming, you know. But we should be able to see it, so that's, I guess that's kinda getting that awareness out. So it's really interesting that this has become a world, it is a worldwide campaign of awareness and education. So I'm really, really, really amazed that just, just our own history here in in Coconino County. And while we do dark sky, while we do a star party over the Navajo Bridge and so I will reach out and see if maybe we can have an educational session at Marble Canyon during this year. And we're actually gonna have it on right during the, I think it was the eclipse that there's an event that's gonna be happening. We'll be having our dark sky party during that time as well. So thank you so much. We really appreciate the partnership that we have with Lowell Observatory and and just being over at the, you know, the, the, all the partners and being able to actually go onsite and see that, that's really amazing. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Supervisor Big Gay, I'm not sure, can you unmute? There she is.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Judy.
Okay, I just wanna say thank you for bringing up this proclamation for, to the board for approval and certainly, you know, it's something that we're very proud of as a Coconino County and probably the state of Arizona and I just wanna say, I'll be doing the proclamation later on at the end of this month and I'm very proud to do so. And I just wanna thank everyone that has been working on, in on the premises and then also, you know, with a lot of people there, you know, to really acknowledge that this is something we should all be there proud of. So thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Big Gay. Thank you for reading the proclamation on behalf of the board. So and our Supervisor Ryan isn't with us because he is in Albuquerque talking about dark skies and the importance of dark skies with the National Astronomical Society. And we miss him, but we know what he's doing is important to carry our message to other place across the world. So thank you Amanda, thank you for being with us and, and I know there's gonna be some great events coming up.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so members of the board, we're moving on cuz we have a second important proclamation here. And this is a consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating June 2023 as Pride Month. And this is being, is being designated all across the country and really in parts of the world for June as our Pride Month. And with that, we do have a proclamation for consideration. And I see Lucinda Andriani, our Deputy County Manager, is gonna read this important proclamation. So the same thing, I'm gonna turn this over for you to read. We'll take a motion and then we'll turn this over to you, Lucinda, or to HR to let us know about the activities that'll be taking place. So with that, please read this proclamation for us, Lucinda.
Alright, well, thank you very much Chair and, and members of the board. I'm honored to present this proclamation today and I just I just really wanna acknowledge that the county has been a leader in this arena for I think upwards of 20 to 25 years and I'm proud to be part of the county continuing that. I know when I joined the county about 20 years ago, the county had domestic partners, you know, offered domestic partners benefits and they were one of the, I think, if not the first, probably the first organ public institution in this county to do so and really respect and honor the past board members that, that developed this commitment to this effort and at this board is continuing that. So thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer and intersex Pride Month. So whereas the Coconino County Board of Supervisors joins citizens and local governments across the country to observe Pride Month and honor the history of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer and intersex liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens, equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas Coconino County is committed to strengthening visibility, respect and equal opportunity for the LGBTQI plus individuals in our diverse community. Recognizing the rainbow flag as a symbol of pride, inclusion, dignity and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ plus community. And whereas Coconino County recognizes the LGBTQI plus community who have greatly contributed to the civic, cultural and economic successes of our county, state and nation and acknowledges the essential need for ongoing education and awareness to end discrimination and injustice. And whereas Coconino County commemorates the achievements and progress of the LGBTQI plus community with historic Supreme Court ruling striking down regressive laws, affirming the right to marriage equality and securing workplace protections for LGBTQI plus individuals in every state and territory. And whereas Coconino County stands in solidarity with the Matthew Shepard and James Byrd Jr. Hate Crimes Prevention Act passed on October 22nd, 2009 and signed into law by President Barack Obama on October 28th, 2009, which expanded the definition of the hate crime laws to include crimes motivated by a victim's actual or perceived gender, sexual orientation, sexual identity or disability. And whereas Coconino County Board of Supervisors salutes Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg, the first openly gay person to serve in the cabinet and Assistant Secretary Dr. Rachel Levine, the first openly transgender person to be confirmed by the Senate. And whereas Coconino County remembers the victims from the Pulse nightclub shooting in Orlando in June 12th, 2016 and stands in unity to eradicate violence, intolerance and hate crimes everywhere they exist. And whereas Coconino County Board of Supervisors encourages our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggles of LGBTQI plus community that continues to face appalling levels of violence against transgender people, especially transgender women of color and calls for an increase in allyship. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Coconino County's LGBTQI plus community and is an opportunity to act and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance and advance equal rights. And now therefore it is resolved that the Coconino County Board of Supervisors do hereby designate June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersect Pride Month throughout Coconino County and celebrates with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities thereby strengthening us as a county, state, state and nation forever. Thank you.
Madam Chair, back to you.
Oops. I've been talking away here, Steve. Thank you, Lucinda. And members of the board, at this point, I would ask for a motion to accept the proclamation and declaring June as Pride Month here and throughout Coconino County. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Supervisor Fowler has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Vasquez. All those in favor of this proclamation and declaring June 2023 as Pride Month, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. It is unanimous and thank you so much. And, you know, I'm just going to make some comments here. You know, as we know, and in many of our proclamations, we acknowledge that Coconino County is stronger and more just when we have a population in a county that reflects the full diversity of our nation, the full diversity that we have in our community. And I think we also have seen a unfortunate rise in discrimination and violence against LGBTQI and quite frankly, people of color. And we must condemn that as as individuals and as a society, certainly as a county. And these proclamations acknowledging our diversity and acknowledging that we are stronger because of that diversity is very, very important in order to, quite frankly, educate our community and ourselves and also to make sure that we put an end to this type of discrimination and violence. So I'm so pleased to be a board member in support of this June as Pride Month. And I look forward to taking part in all kinds of activities here in celebration during the month of June. And with that, I'm going to turn this to Krista from Human Resources to explain about some of those activities. So Krista, please.
Thank you, Chair Horstman, and members of the board for recognizing June as Pride Month. We do have programming throughout the month of June on Tuesdays and Thursdays, starting on June 8. And these are all Zoom presentations between 12 and 1 o'clock. June 8 is State of Pride. Tuesday, June 13 will be Erica Shaw presenting on LGBTQIA plus 101. Tuesday, I'm sorry, Thursday, June 15, we'll have a presentation on gender diversity and identity in Queer Topia. Tuesday, June 20, we will have a Stonewall Lunch and Learn. I'm actually going to bring this over to my monitor so you don't keep looking at the side of my face. We will also have on Thursday, June 22, Rainbow Flag History Lunch and Learn. Tuesday, June 20, Thursday, excuse me, Tuesday, June 27, Sidney Tolchinsky and Applekill Crick of Sexual Health Benefits and Resources, LGBTQIA and Inclusive Sexual Health Information in Coconino County. Wednesday, June 28, Madron from NAU presenting on queer grief in our community. And Thursday, June 29, Erica Shaw will be presenting on pride and inclusion in the workplace. We will be sending out a global message. And should you want the links sent to you, please reach out to Arena Contreras at a contreras@coconino.az.gov, and she can forward the links for the Zoom Lunch and Learns to you.
That would be great. And are those lunch and learns on our website so we can go to the website and find those?
I believe so, yes.
Because that would be great. So thank you, Krista. Really appreciate that. So members of the board, I turn this over to you for other comments. Members of the board, Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really happy that we have these proclamations with diversity and just, it just it just amazes me that we have to, we have to add, we have to have education about how diversity is important and that we just respect other people as as people. And but I'm really happy that we do that because that's we, we are, you know, in Navajo, we just say we're all five fingered people. And that's how we we really look at people and I just wish everybody else did. And really happy that our county recognizes that. And so I'm really happy that these educational events are happening. They sound very interesting. And we just have to all be operating as as one, like we always say, the county family and all of the residents in the county to really recognize others as as they are and as they people they are and really value family and just being being together as a family and neighbors and communities. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Other comments? Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. Again, I'd like to thank you, Lucinda, for reading the proclamation and for for the whole team and staff for putting it together. And as was mentioned, like Lucinda mentioned, it's a great source of pride and joy and honor to recognize, be part of a county that recognizes the diversity of all our communities and all the different diversity that there is. And and so, you know, we we at Coconino County in a lot of ways are in the forefront of stuff. And and this is another example of it. And so I just really appreciate that our county does recognize all the diversity in our counties. Because as I've developed and grown in 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 my understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion, that means everybody, we include everybody in everything we do. And I think sometimes we forget that. And, you know, this proclamation is a way of us as the county recognizing that and putting that forward, that all people are welcome in our county. And we we recognize and celebrate all diversity in our county. And so, again, just really appreciate, look forward to the events of Pride Month. And and thank you for bringing this forward.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Other comments, questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Baguette.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes. I'm so thankful that this is coming before us as a proclamation. I think, you know, basically, you know, we're acknowledging that, you know, that there's been certainly a lot of respect that should continue to happen and that everyone should be treated equally. And and again, you know, certainly there's a lot of education that still needs to be happening. And so I just want to say I'm glad to be part of this proclamation. And I think, you know, we just need to be there for one another and just be respectful. And we just need to make sure that there's no kind of crimes, hate crimes or anything, you know. Just like if they said, you know, Hate Crimes Prevention Act was passed on October 22, 2009, and law was passed by President Obama on October 28, 2009. So those those things are helping us, you know, and I think we should abide by them. And I'm just thankful that we have this Pride Month coming forward for the board for consideration and approval. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Baguette. Are any other comments? Seen none? Then we are going to move on. So see, I told you this is going to be a good board meeting to phenomenal proclamations. So thank you both. Lucinda and the Lowell Observatory for being with us for our board meeting this afternoon. So we are now going to another important item. Members of the public, we, the board, and the staff basically spent approximately three weeks going through with department heads and going through our budget, working with our finance team, our county management team. And we are now at a point where we are going to do a tentative budget adoption. And I understand the finance, our Finance Director Siri Malaney is here. And she's going to present these items. And Siri, I'm going to ask you, instead of me trying to read these and making a mistake on the amounts, I'm going to ask you if you could please take us through each of these agenda items with the full amount set forth.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's County Manager, please.
I just want to make some introductory comments before we turn it over to Siri. Because again, I don't read numbers very well either. And so I would love to rely on Siri to be the expert number reader. But more importantly, this represents the tentative budget for your consideration. The tentative budget, as you may know, creates the upper limit of the budget that is adopted for the county. It goes with, as you indicated, a lot of effort on the part of the finance and budget team, but also appreciation and acknowledgement to all of our county elected officials and appointed department heads. As you as you mentioned, for three weeks out at Highlands Fire, we did receive presentations and the board had in-depth conversations with each of our departments and our elected officials related to their budget needs for this year. The conversations were very in-depth. They were very good. There are a number of follow-up items that we'll be looking at throughout the year and bringing back to the board in the form of work sessions. But again, this is one step in a very, in several steps of a process. And so followed from today, we'll be coming back to the board on June 27 for the final adoption, as well as the truth and taxation hearing. At that time, Madam Chair will be presenting more of a highlight presentation of what's contained in the budget. So that'll be on deck for June 27. And then from there, after that, we'll come back on August 8. And and we will accept the tax rates for the property tax jurisdictions, as well as set our tax rates for Coconino County and associated special districts. And so again, I just want to acknowledge the effort that's gone into to all of the work and then also part of the budget, and you'll have this later in our agenda today, is the process we're going through for financing for our capital program for three fiscal years for 2024, 25, and 26. And that's a major milestone for the county in in investing in our capital needs at the same time. So again, it's my pleasure and my honor to present this to you. And I want to acknowledge the work of our budget team. And with your permission, I'll turn it over to Siri, and she'll walk us through the budget for each of the jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager, and thank you for your comments.
Siri?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. So County Manager Peru covered most of the information. I just had a few other things I wanted to note for the public record. So as noted, we will be holding final adoption on June 27. So following today's action, we will be publishing a series of legal requirements in the Daily Sun that will include our truth and taxation notices, our public hearing notices for the final budget adoption. And we will also have information on the legal budget available for the public. So this morning, you were provided all of the legal schedules we're required to adopt the budget in. This format is prescribed by the Arizona Auditor General's office. If any member of the public wishes to access these schedules, they are available as part of the record of this meeting. They can also be made available upon request, either by contacting our clerk of the board or by accessing the county's main website. So we have several places where these schedules are available for the public in advance of the meeting. And then just a note that it does include all of the assumptions as discussed during those three weeks of budget meetings. And those have all been folded into these legal budget schedules. Compared to our fiscal year 2023 budget, this budget that we are presenting for fiscal year 24 is $137 million higher than last year's, driven by two factors. So the first one is because County Manager Peru noted, today we are setting the ceiling, which is really the maximum amount we can spend during a fiscal year. And we do have an increase in our placeholder for unawarded grants. And we've noted, we've mentioned this in the past as well, that there have been several federal programs made available in the last several fiscal years to which the county can apply for federal grant funding. And so we have placeholders, knowing that we have some applications in the queue that may not have been awarded yet. So that makes up about $40 million of the budget increase compared to last fiscal year. And then the other major component is a large increase in the flood control district budget compared to last year. Taking you back, last year, we adopted the budget around the same time. This was before the major fires. We had pipeline and tunnel and haywire and all of the flooding then that resulted. And so the budget we set last year for the flood control district was really only the district budget funded by the property tax. This year, in the meantime, we've received significant federal dollars that will be expended by the flood control district. So another $73.5 million of our budget increase for this year is attributable to expending federal dollars that we will be reimbursed for in the flood control district for flood control-related projects. So those are really the highlights. So with that, staff would like to recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopts the fiscal year 2024 tentative budget for Coconino County in the amount of $546,374,685.
Members of the board, you have heard the recommendation from our Finance Director and heard the comments of our County Manager. And of course, we were all present for three weeks as we were going through this process. So I see, at this time, I'd entertain a motion or if there are any comments. But I see Supervisor Fowler is bubbled up.
I move that we adopt the tentative budget as read by our Finance Director Siri. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Do we have a second to that? Second by Vice Chair Geronimo Vasquez. All those in favor of adopting a tentative budget for Coconino County as recommended by our Finance Director? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Baguette. Did you have a comment before the vote? I apologize.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to know, I just want to know where in the booklet that we have that has the breakdown and all the stuff that Siri wrote, read. Is it in our booklet here? I don't see it anywhere.
Thank you, Supervisor Baguette.
Stuff that you just now mentioned.
Yes, and members of the board, this was provided to you via email this morning. My apologies, it did not make it into your packet as we actually just received the official schedules finalized by the Auditor General late last week. So they did not make it in time for the packet. Then we had to sort of crunch all the numbers and put them into the legally required format that is sent out every year in early June. So you do have it in your email, and I can certainly get you a printed copy as well.
And as I understand it, it was in fact posted, right, 24 hours before. Pursuant to open meeting law. Is that correct, Siri?
Thank you, Chair. The numbers on the agenda and the agenda itself was posted. The documents themselves are being provided during this meeting. They've been provided to the clerk and the board as of this morning.
Very good. Supervisor Baguette, any other questions?
I know. Yes. As you guys know, I've been talking about where, you know, we're way out here in the boonies. And it's really hard to get things to last minute. And I know that I don't have that information with me right now. And so I don't know what, I don't know. I just feel that it should be given to us and I just didn't, you know, have time. I didn't have the internet to check the email or anything. So I'm not, I'm kind of in the dark as to what was. I just tried to quickly write down what was said earlier by Siri. And so I think, you know, to me, to make a decision, a good and sound decision on behalf of the county, I think we really need to be careful about stuff like that. So so that was my comment, and I guess we'll go for the vote.
Thank you, Supervisor Baguette. I apologize for rushing the vote. And I am going to ask again, we had a motion by Supervisor Fowler. We had a second by Vice Chair Vasquez. We've now received comments. Any further comments before we go to the vote?
Yeah, I just want to say, in the future, Siri, what might help with this is if just the one last page that shows the total budget, if that was shared on the screen, I think that would help with something. I know with Supervisor Brigade, it's on on phone, but I have the documents with me and I had a hard time following. So if being able to at least be shown that one page or I think it's the last page that actually has the full budget limit or budget ceiling that we want, I think that would be helpful moving forward. So but other than that, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Otherwise, we will now go for a vote. All those in favor of the adoption of the tentative budget as set forth by Siri and also our County Manager, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Supervisor Baguette, did you vote? I want to make sure this is important. So I want to make sure we've got our record complete. Supervisor Baguette?
I'm probably going to abstain right now.
I'm, I'm probably going to abstain right now. Uh, because I don't have all the information that I need, you know, to make a decision. So. Um, like I said, um, I, this has been brought up where, um, missing documents are not there for us. And, um, so I just want to say that, thank you.
I believe then, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you are abstaining from voting, is that correct? Supervisor Begay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get the record, uh, uh, correct record on this. And I know I saw three ayes, uh, Supervisor Vasquez, I'll learn myself, and so I. Are you voting for this or are you abstaining?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna oppose it for now, thank you.
Okay, oppose or abstain? Whoops, do we, I'm sorry. I think we lost her. Uh-oh.
Well, um. Madam Chair.
Yes Supervisor Fowler.
Can I just say that I support this because we, we, um, we went through this process for three weeks. Every single day and we went through every, every department as mentioned by County Manager. Um, and the, I think it's just that we have the big binder that we have that we had from there. And, um, maybe what was emailed out could be text to her, the total amount also. So she sees the actual amount.
Yeah, I, um.
Madam Chair, Siria, Siria.
Yes.
Supervisor Begay, I mean.
Yeah.
So. Uh, Madam Chair and members of the board, I would be happy to put the schedules up, um, on the screen share as well for viewing. Uh, I do want to note, we actually received these documents on Monday. We received the official forms yesterday. So we've been working on all the numbers, but unfortunately, we didn't have the legally official format until yesterday, um, in order to provide it. So, um, we do plan to do a, a larger presentation with the, um, final adopted budget. That includes, um, some charts on the budget and, um, some information as noted by County Manager Peru. Uh, but if you would like me to go ahead and screen share, I would be happy to walk through the main budget schedule and, and sort of describe. How you read these schedules and, and walk through them for a little more information if you'd prefer.
Uh, I think at this point, we, um, have, have a vote and a motion. We're just trying to ask for clarification of what. Supervisor's gaze is, and, uh, she's dialing back in. So I, I thought I heard originally that she was abstaining. And then it wasn't clear whether she was, um, objecting.
Chair Horstman, I'd like to just mention too, I've got, um, Supervisor Matt Ryan on my cell phone. He's on speaker. He can hear, I just, he just joined, so he's on my phone. Um, and he can hear, and if he needs to speak too, I'm going to unmute so that he can also participate.
Well, okay, wait a minute, we, uh, it. We have Heather with us, Heather. Uh, I don't want, uh, this is an extremely important vote. And I want to make sure we're doing it correctly. I did not have Supervisor Fowler or, um, uh, Matt. Supervisor Fowler on when, I'm sorry, Ryan, what, what Supervisor? Uh, Ryan was not on when the motion or second was made. So I'm not sure if it's appropriate for him to vote for this at this time. All I'm asking for is a clarification on Supervisor, um, uh, Begay's, um, whether she is. Abstaining or whether she voted against. So I don't want to confuse our motion and our second and our vote. Through all of a sudden putting in, um, Matt Ryan, but I hope Matt can stay on for the rest of it. Am I correct Heather on that?
Yes, I would agree with that Chair. Um, if Supervisor Ryan was not on for the entire. Presentation and discussion of this item, I don't think it would be appropriate to have him. Uh, make a vote at this time, but I do see that Supervisor Begay is back on, so hopefully she can clarify for us what her. Whether she's abstaining or, um. Voting no at this point.
Supervisor Begay, can you clarify your vote?
Um. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, but I'm, I'm driving in, so, um. But anyway, I just said, you know, I really don't have the information to really make a sound decision, um, so I just, I want to either abstain or oppose it. Either one.
Yeah, can you tell us which one you prefer? Are you abstaining or opposing?
I'll be, I'll be just abstaining from the vote.
Thank you Supervisor Begay, so I'm going to have the record reflect. That there are three in favor and one, I'm sorry, three in favor and one abstention. And one, and one Supervisor who was not on for that vote. So let's move forward, we're going to go on. Um, we have, uh, item number four, and I'm going to turn this again over to Siri and have her read this. And is Supervisor Ryan on? Is the record going to reflect that Supervisor Ryan is on with us?
Correct, I do have Supervisor Matt Ryan on. Matt, do you want to go ahead and, and speak so everybody can hear you?
Yeah, I, I can speak. Um. And, and Madam Chair, just a note, I do have all the materials that were provided. Uh, if there were testimony, I, I missed that, we could have done a, uh, uh, withdrawal motions instead. And, and I could have been brought back into that. However, uh, I do support it in concept. Uh, and, uh, you had enough votes to carry it, uh, so it's not necessary that we would, uh, revisit that. Uh, I'm prepared to listen in on the budget items. I have all the materials available that were provided. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks Supervisor Ryan. No, we didn't know you were on, so we did not have the record reflecting you as part of our discussion, so. But I'm glad you're on now, we need you and want you, so thank you for being with us. So with that Siri, can you please, uh, take us through the next one?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair and members of the board. Our next item is consideration impossible action to adopt. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-four tentative budget for the fire district assistance tax. This is a statutory requirement, um, that the board has. Where a rate of up to ten cents is levied by the fire district assistance tax. And then is distributed by a statutory formula to the various fire districts within Coquenino County. Um, we have to run the calculations based on the preliminary information we have from the fire districts. And, um, are recommending the full amount of the, uh, point one zero. Tax rate be established, uh, which we will do through our tax rate setting process. Uh, but for now, this item is to set the budget based on that ten cent tax rate. Uh, so staff is recommending that the board. Um, adopts the tentative budget for the fire district assistance tax in the amount of two million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to open it up. First, are there any comments or questions from the board? And if there are none, I would entertain a motion. To adopt the tentative budget for the fire district assistance tax as recommended by Siri. Supervisor Fowler.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the, um, tentative budget for the fire assist. Uh, assistance tax as read by our Finance Director.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a second? We have a second by Vice Chair Vasquez. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, say abstention.
Ma- Madam. Lindsay, could you put that on?
I'm on, you're unmuted.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, uh, Lindsay, Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Madam Chair, uh, we've had past practices, uh, that, uh, if the board member is present. Uh, that, uh, they can't abstain unless they were having a conflict associated with it. So, um, so if, uh, as we proceed through this, uh. Uh, you know, I would encourage, uh. You know, that we maintain that process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your comments, uh, and although I might philosophically agree with everything you've said. I'm going to turn this over to Heather in terms of legally, uh, what, uh, we have a right to make an abstention vote.
Sorry, my mouse was not cooperating. Um, I am unfamiliar, I don't know if that is a policy or practice of this board. Uh, on previous boards I've been involved in, uh, board members have always been permitted to abstain if they wanted to abstain from a vote, so. Uh, I, I, I can do more research, but I'm unfamiliar with that being a, a limitation on the ability to abstain.
Very good, and at this point, I think we have four in favor, and I don't know Supervisor Begay, are you voting? I'm so sorry Supervisor Begay, we're having a really hard time with your vocal. Um, are you, uh, what, how do you vote on this? I think we've lost her.
She dropped it, oh, she's dropped again.
Okay, so, uh, at this point, I think we have four in favor and I think we've lost Supervisor Begay.
Hmm, that's correct.
All right. Very good, so I, it looks like we have a vote of four. And, uh, we've lost one of our members, and so the record will reflect that she wasn't present for voting. Heather, do you have a problem with me going forward?
No Chair.
Thank you. All right Siri, I'm going to have you take it away.
Thank you Chair, I think we actually need to resolve as the flood control district board.
Just to make life difficult, I have been told we have to resolve as a board for each independent. Uh, special district, hi Matt, uh, each independent special district. Uh, and so we are going to have individual votes as we go into our special districts. The first wa- uh, one is that we are now the Board of Supervisors, but we must. Go and resolve as the flood control district board, and so I'm going to ask for a motion to resolve as a flood control district board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Supervisor Fowler, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair, all those in favor resolving as the, uh, flood control district board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous, there are four of us voting. Uh, we are now the flood control district board of directors, and I'm turning this over, I believe, to you Siri.
Uh, yes, thank you Madam Chair and members of the board. So our next item is for the flood control district specifically. Their, uh, twenty, FY twenty-two tentative budget. While this is a part of the budget we already adopted for the county, because we have the special districts where the Board of Supervisors. Serves as the, uh, Board of Directors for each district, we must also individually adopt a tentative budget for each of these districts. So our first one is the flood control district, and as noted, um, the budget for this is eighty-three point five million, uh, which is an increase from last year again. Um, primarily funded through federal funding, uh, that is coming into the district, uh, for flood mitigation projects. So at this time, staff recommends that the board adopt the tentative budget, uh, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. For the flood control district in the amount of eighty-three million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Thank you, members of the board, I should say, members of the flood control district board, uh, uh, unless you have comments or questions. I would entertain a motion to adopt the tentative budget for the flood control district, um, as recommended by Siri. Supervisor, uh, Vask? Just as made a motion and leaves, go ahead, yes, I'm sorry. Comment?
Uh, as in all the other presentations, Flood District did do a, uh, presentation. We went through the, uh, budget during our budget hearings, the three weeks that we were there. Each of the department that, um, presented and Flood District was one of those departments, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler, I think that's.
I second that.
Thank you for that, uh, we have a motion, we have a second, any more comments? Seeing none, at this point, um, I am going to call.
Madam Chair.
Yes Supervisor Begay.
Um, you know, uh, whatever was sent out yesterday is not what I have, and that's basically what is being read into the record. And that's the reason why I'm abstaining. Yes, we did have our three weeks meeting, but, um, I just want to make sure that, you know, um. I have the documents in place to make sure that I, I can make a sound decision on anything, everything that comes to the board. And I would, I always stress that, you know, in our meetings and stuff like that, so, um, I, so, uh, that's it, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Begay, uh, and, uh, noted, and I think you've indicated that already. And, uh, you also heard legal advice that if you feel you do not have the information necessary. If you, if it, it is your prerogative whether you choose to abstain or not from your vote. We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor of the flood control district. Uh, in the amount that was read, uh, by Siri, please signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Any abstention? We have an abstention. Thank you Judy, it's four to one, we have, uh, four in favor, one abstention. We are now going to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of being the Board of Supervisors signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Now I am going to entertain a motion to resolve as a Public Health District Board, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Fowler, all those in favor of being the Public Health District Board, please signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous, we are now the Public Health District Board. Siri, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Great, thank you Madam Chair and members of the board. The next item is our Public Health Services District tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Um, as noted by Supervisor Fowler, they also attended the budget hearings and did provide, um, a lengthy presentation on the budget for fiscal year twenty-four. And those assumptions are included in the budget adoption that is being presented. So at this point, staff recommends the board adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four tentative budget. For the Coquenino County Public Health Services District in the amount of twenty-six million, seven hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you, members of the board. Are there any comments or questions before I entertain a motion to adopt the tentative budget? For the Coquenino County Public Health District as read by Siri Mulaney. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ryan, I have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor of adopting the tentative budget for the Coquenino County Public Health District signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
We have four in favor, one abstention. Members of the board, we must now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second? Second by Supervisor Begay, all those in favor of being the Board of Supervisors signify by saying aye, aye. Members of the board, we must now resolve back as the Jail District Board of Directors, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Fowler, I have a second by, uh, Supervisor Begay. All those in favor of resolving as the Jail District Board of Directors signify by saying aye, aye. It is unanimous, we are now the Jail District Board of Directors, Siri, take it away.
Thank you Madam Chair and members of the board. Our next item is for the Jail District Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-four tentative budget. The sheriff and jail district staff were present during our budget, um, meetings over the last several weeks. And, um, did provide information on what is included in this fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget. So at this point, staff recommends the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four tentative budget. For the Coquenino County Jail District in the amount of thirty million, eight hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I, any comments or questions before I entertain a motion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the tentative budget for the Coquenino County Jail District.
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ryan, a second. Second by Vice Chair, all those in favor of. Adopting the twenty-twenty-four tentative budget for the Coquenino County Jail, excuse me, Jail District, please signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Uh, Supervisor Fowler, was that an aye?
Yes, aye.
Uh, it, any, any, um, any opposition, uh, any abstentions?
Um, I, I'm abstaining because it doesn't have the amount on the, um. On the document that we have, it just says the amount to be determined, so. All of the ones that I didn't get is, um, it just says the amount to be determined, so it doesn't even have the amount that was specific. They read to us in the record, thank you.
All right, it is four in favor and one abstention, members of the board, we must now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, yeah, motion and second, all those in favor of resolving back as the Board of Supervisors signify by saying aye, aye. All right. It is unanimous, and now we have to resolve as one of the most important special districts. Uh, do I have a motion for us to resolve as the Tucson Special Street Lighting District?
Um, sorry Chair, I believe we may have missed the Library District.
Oh, we did, I was so excited about going to Tucson, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna go back.
We have to skip that one.
Members of the board, do I have a motion for us to resolve as the Library District Board of Directors?
Some move.
All right, motion second, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, um, Supervisor Ryan, all those in favor of being the Library District Board of Directors signify by saying aye, aye. It is unanimous, we are now the Library District Board of Directors, Siri, please take it away.
Thank you Madam Chair and members of the board, um, during our budget hearings, we did have staff from the Library District come and present. Um, which included the new Library District Director, Linda Tilson, if you recall those discussions. And at this point, staff is recommending the board adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-four tentative budget. For the Coconino County Library District in the amount of six million, forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Thank you, do I have any comments or questions before I entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes Supervisor Ryan.
And this budget is based on the intent to modify the, uh, levy slightly, um. It, um, in, uh, as we, um, set up our levies, is that correct Siri?
Yes, thank you Supervisor Ryan and, uh, members of the board. This does include a placeholder to increase the tax rate, um, as part of the district plan that has been discussed over the past several years. So this would reflect a point zero one increase in the tax rate. Um, which will be advertised as part of our truth and taxation notices. And will be, um, formally voted on by the Board of Supervisors at the June twenty-seventh meeting as part of the truth and taxation process. Uh, so this does provide that placeholder should the board choose to move forward with that tax rate change.
And also, if I may Madam Chair, um, so we are. Tentative budget, which is the high end, we could always reduce it if we chose when we did the fuck, do the final budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you Siri, thank you Madam Chair.
Thanks Supervisor Ryan for the clarification, I appreciate that, um, uh, members of the board. We have a, um, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the fiscal year twenty-four, uh, two thousand twenty-four tentative budget as read by Siri.
Do I have a second? Second by, uh, Vice Chair Vasquez, all those in favor of accepting the, uh, tentative budget for. Uh, the Coconino County Library Di- District signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposition, any abstention?
I abstain.
We have four in favor, we have one abstention. Now we need to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Supervisor Fowler, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Supervisor Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Right, we're now the Board of Supervisors, but now we get to resolve. As the Tucson Special Street Lighting District Board, do I have a motion?
So Madam Chair, I, 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 I'm struggling with this, I need an appeal from the representative to please don't turn off the lights to Tucson.
I, I, I appreciate your concern for Tucson, is that a motion Supervisor?
I'm, I'm seconding the motion that, uh, um, Director Vasquez, or actually Supervisor.
Uh, okay, I think it's Director, okay, but yeah, okay, good Supervisor Director, whatever. We do have a motion by Su- uh, by Vice Chair, we have a second by Director Ryan, all those in favor. Oh wait, of resolving as the Tucson Special Street Lighting District Board signify by saying aye, aye. Okay, now, thank you, it's unanimous, now that, and I'm gonna turn this over to, to Siri.
Thank you Madam Chair and members of the boards, our final special district is the Tucson Special Lighting District. And this is funded by a special assessment on the residents, uh, which they approved, uh, by a vote, uh, several years ago, and this has been in effect. For many years, um, the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as re- recommended by staff for the Tucson Special Lighting District. Is eleven thousand, four hundred dollars.
All right, any comments or questions before I entertain a motion? Seeing no comments or questions, except for the peanut gallery, Miss Supervisor Ryan, do I have a motion?
So move, as read, I, I, Madam Chair, I approve as, as read by our Finance Director.
Thank you, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll go ahead and second it, Madam.
You, uh, Director Ryan, I appreciate that, all those in favor of adopting the tentative budget for the Tucson Special Street Lighting District. Signify by saying aye, aye. Any, any opposed, any, uh, res- uh, anyone who is abstaining? We have four in favor, one abstention, members of the board, we need to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Some move.
A motion by Vice Chair, a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor of resolving as the Board of Supervisors signify by saying aye. It is unanimous, we are now the Board of Supervisors, and we are moving on with our agenda. On our consent agenda, and members of the public, members of the board, as you know, consent agenda items are more ministerial or administrative in nature. They can be handled through one, uh, motion and one vote. Uh, if there is any discussion on individual items, they can be removed by the board from the consent agenda. For individual discussion and an individual motion and vote. At this time, members of the board, we have a number of items on our consent agenda, I believe it's ten through. Uh, ten through thirty-seven, I'm going to ask the board, are there any items on the consent agenda? You want to remove for individual discussion or vote? And if not, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as set forth. In our agenda items, ten through thirty-seven, do I have anyone trying to remove an item from our consent agenda?
I'm second.
So we have, uh, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, I'm sorry, I may have missed it.
I think it's Matt.
Uh, Madam Chair, yes.
Uh, okay Matt, I'm sorry, you, you cut out there, um, but, a motion by Su- uh, Supervisor Ryan to accept the consent agenda second. By Supervisor Begay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. It's unanimous, we have approved the consent agenda. Members of the board, we now have a consent agenda item as the Flood Control District. Board of Directors, so I need a motion to resolve as a Flood Control District Board, do I have such a motion? We have, um. Motion by Supervisor Brigade, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Second by, uh, by Supervisor Ryan, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All right, I heard it was unanimous, we are moving forward as the Flood Control District. Board of Directors, again, members of the public, this is a consent agenda, it's more administrative or ministerial in nature. Can be handled through one motion and one vote, uh, if we would like to have an individual discussion or individual vote. We need to remove it from the consent agenda, members of the board, uh, or members of the Board of Directors. Uh, would you like to remove any of the Flood Control District consent items out of the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the Flood Control District consent agenda items thirty-eight. Two forty-seven, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Uh, motion by, uh, Supervisor Brigade, second by Vice Chair Vasquez. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda indicate by saying aye, aye. All right, uh, was, we now need to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, do I have such a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by, uh, Vice Chair, second by Matt Ryan, uh, to move back as the Board of Supervisors, all those in favor. Signify by saying aye, aye.
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 I, uh, Judy, I'm sorry, did you vote?
Yes, I said aye.
Okay, which unanimous, that's what I needed to find out, and I just have lost my. Chair's agenda, sorry, um, and members of the board, I believe now we need to resolve as the, uh. Public Health District, um, Board of Directors for a consent agenda item, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Ryan, second by Supervisor Begay, all those in favor of resolving. As the Public Health District, um, Board of Directors signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous, uh, we are now the Public Health District. Board of Directors, and we have a consent agenda item, again, more administrative in nature. Uh, members of the board, uh, do we wanna remove this, or do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda item forty-eight?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ryan, second by Judy Begay, all those in favor of accepting the Public Health District Consent Agenda. Signify by saying aye, aye. It is unanimous, that members of the board, we must now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Vice Chair, second by Supervisor Fowler, all those in favor of resolving as the Board of Supervisors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you, now we are, need to resolve as. The Jail District Board of Directors, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Now I have a, uh, Supervisor Fowler made the motion, the second by, uh, Supervisor Begay. All those in favor of resolving as the Jail District Board of Directors signify by saying aye.
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 We have two consent agenda items. Members of the board, do you want to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? Or I would entertain a motion to accept the Jail District Consent Agenda.
Some move.
Motion by, uh, Supervisor Brigade to accept the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair, all those in favor of accepting the Jail District Consent Agenda signify by saying aye, aye. It's unanimous, I love that, when that happens, members of the board. We must now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors, I think we are done with our special districts. So do I have a motion to resolve back as the Board of Supervisors?
Some move.
Some move.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler, and a second by Supervisor Brigade, all those in favor of resolving back as the Board of Supervisors. Please signify by saying aye. That's just way too many hats to wear, but we are now the Board of Supervisors. Uh, and I'm gonna turn this over, I, we have a pub, hearing and I.
If I may.
Yes.
Could I ask that we rearrange the agenda to cover item fifty-two before we do it, item fifty-one? So that I can get back to what I'm supposed to be doing here?
Absolutely, and we know what you're doing there is really important, and we had asteroid day today Supervisor Ryan, and we know you're there protecting our dark skies. Yeah, and really appreciate you being there, so I don't, I think fifty-one is not going forward, is that correct? It's fifty-one is removed.
Oh.
I, uh, item fifty-one is going to be removed, member to the board. Uh, and I assume we'll come back at a later date, is that correct?
No Madam Chair, that is the, within the jurisdiction for the city flag staff, not from the community, so it goes there.
Thank you, then it will be removed, it's not properly really then before us, so with that. Supervisor Ryan, you do have item number fifty-two, uh, and this is a public hearing, um. Wait a minute. Uh, fifty-two is public hearing as required by eleven three ninety-one on a proposal to incur a long-term obligation. For capital improvement projects through the use of long-term financing, I believe that's where we are, um. And with that, uh, I'm gonna turn this over to the County Manager, and then we'll proceed.
Thank you Madam Chair, members of the board, as I indicated in my introductory comments. This year's, this year's, uh, financial package with regard to the budget will also, is also including. Uh, proposal and recommendation of the Board of Supervisors for the county to engage in. Uh, with financing for some of our capital projects, and so capital projects in the categories of. Of roads is gonna be the, is the largest portion of the capital that's gonna, capital financing that's gonna be supporting those projects. In addition to that, uh, looking at technology, looking at vehicles and equipment. Uh, looking at areas in which we are providing additional, uh. Uh, local match for congressional designated funding that has come our way through our, through our, uh, advocacy at the congressional level, so. Uh, during the budget process, uh, we did provide information to you on the, on the detailed types of capital. That we're, that we're proposing for this financing package, uh, you provided input to us, uh, and we also, of course. Uh, reached out to departments and with regard to their capital needs, and so again, this is a three-year capital financing, uh, package. Uh, that is before you for consideration, and so I'm going to, uh, turn it over with your permission to Siri who will then tee it up. For, for Mark Reader and, and, uh, over at Stiefel, so Siri, go to you.
Thank you County Manager, Madam Chair and members of the board, uh, first off, I wanna make sure that all of our representatives from Stiefel that need to be on as, um, presenters. Um, I think we still have Jack Lieber to add, is that correct Mark?
Um, if he's not with us, uh, we can go ahead, thank you Siri.
Okay, great, um, so, um, and then, uh, yes, so if we can go ahead and do some quick introductions, I know. We all met during the budget meetings again with the folks from Stiefel, but we have, um, Mark Reader and Paul Gales here, if you, um, wouldn't mind doing a quick introduction. Um, of your roles.
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, it's nice to see you again, this is Mark Reader with Stiefel. And as you know, uh, we've been retained by the county to assist with your financing. Um, with regard to what we're gonna talk about this afternoon. Turn it over to Paul.
And, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board, Paul Gales with Greenberg Charred, we are special counsel to the county with respect to this financing. Good to see you again.
Very good.
Thank you, and, um, Mark, will you be pulling up our presentation?
Uh, yes, I'll go ahead and pull that up here.
Madam Chair, I do see Jack Lieber on the attendee side, so we need to pull him over to panelists.
Jack, if you could please accept the promotion.
All right, so thank you, um, Madam Chair and members of the board, for this first part, um. Mark and his team will be walking through the requirements of the eleven three ninety-one hearing, um, going over our long-term indebtedness for our three-year capital. Improvement Plan.
Okay, um, thank you Siri, and once again, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon, um. We, uh, we have a little PowerPoint presentation with you, for you here, this is a follow-up to our. May tenth and May eleventh study session, as you recall. And under Arizona law, as a reminder. When our counties, uh, move forward with a, uh, capital improvement financing plan, and they enter into what's known as long-term obligations. Under Arizona revised statutes, our counties with a population of less than five hundred thousand are required to go through this extra step. Or this public hearing. So the purpose, uh, this, this afternoon is to do that, we drafted a PowerPoint, we'll piggyback on this a little bit. That is in compliance with the statute, and I'm gonna walk you through those requirements. Um, again, as I just mentioned to you, here are the requirements under ARS eleven three ninety-one. Which requires it, requires the county to post and publish a notice of a hearing. On the proposal to incur long-term obligation and a newspaper of general circulation, as mentioned to you. Uh, in the county, at least fifteen days prior to the date of the hearing, which we've done. Hold a public hearing as announced in a notice, at least fifteen days prior to the adoption. Of a resolution for incurring the long-term obligation. I'm gonna walk you through that further with a financing calendar we have in our presentation. The hearing, uh, requires us to outline the need for the project, the need to use long-term financing. And any other available options, uh, available for the county. Uh, and in conjunction with the hearing, the board will receive oral or written comments, so we just wanted to summarize for you. I know some of this is a repeat, as we've done this before together. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this, uh, slide over to Siri, and she's gonna walk you through the capital improvement projects that we had discussed previously.
Thanks Mark and Madam Chair and members of the board, so this slide just has a high-level summary. Um, again, you have a full detail that was provided as a handout during the budget meetings. But we took the eighty million dollars in our capital plan, and we categorized it, you can see in the table below, into four categories. Um, the largest category being road, transportation, and to public safety projects. Uh, those are primarily projects funded with our HERF and our road maintenance sales tax dollars, um, and relate to our road projects as well as, um, some public safety, um, match dollars we have on our congressionally-directed spending for emergency management. We also have county equipment, and again, by and large, this is county equipment replacement in our transportation department, our public works department. Uh, we also have county land and building acquisition, acquisition, construction, maintenance, and improvement, uh, which includes some of the projects, um, again, discussed in depth during the budget meetings. For example, um, facility, some facilities remodels, um, and HVAC uh, improvements, as well as some infrastructure grant match money that, um, has been allocated to the information technology department. Um, and then county infrastructure is our final, um, category, which is the rest of the match money on those congressionally-directed spending dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department. As well as, um, additional enhancements to the, uh, to the city facility. So with that, we get to the total of eighty million dollars of spending over the next three years for the capital plan.
Okay, thank you, Siri. I'll continue, uh, Madam Chair, members of the boards, uh, boards. Far as our options to finance our capital improvement needs under, uh, Arizona statute and what our counties can do. Uh, the counties, uh, can have a property tax, general obligation bond election, which is not uh, obviously being recommended here. Our counties can also enter into a really more, more expensive lease purchase type program. Hear a little bit of background noise there, I apologize. Counties, uh, can pay cash, and the recommendation in terms of the options that we believe is the most efficient for the county relative to the issuance of the eighty million we're talking about here is to the issuance of the excise tax revenue bonds on a private placement basis. So we wanted to share with you the available options that we've all looked very carefully at, and the selection of that recommendation. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, again, the little, this is a little bit of a repeat. Uh, we appreciate that. Um, we've structured the transaction as a excise tax revenue obligation. We've structured it in column four through six there, really as a shorter-term financing, as we want to keep our interest costs, as you know, to a minimum to the extent possible. So we have amortized it initially at a four-year amortization, as you can see. But as you know, and as discussed, the county will accelerate the repayment of the debt obligations through a special uh, call feature that we're going to be able to incorporate into the transaction to reduce our interest cost. So this is really uh, the same schedule that we shared with you back on May tenth and May eleventh. Um, as you know, when we close the financing, and I'm going to walk you through a calendar here in a moment, please bear with me. Um, we, uh, we'll take the eighty million dollars, and we're going to, with the county's help, we're going to put the money into US government securities. We're going to earn a lot of interest off the eighty million dollars as the county draws the money down. Um, and utilize the interest earnings on that to offset our estimated interest costs, which we had estimated at about three point two million. Um, utilizing the offset of the interest earnings from the bond monies. Um, we're estimating, uh, at about two point three million. So as you recall, we were thinking that the net cost, uh, to the county associated with this, you know, relatively short-term financing to address your capital improvement needs is somewhere around the million-dollar range. Um, since we spoke back on May, May ninth and May tenth, um, interest rates have risen on us a little bit. Um, as a result of the debt ceiling, which was resolved, but also some inflationary news out there. Uh, it's not, it's not the end of the world, as we're also getting higher interest earnings on the short-term US government securities. So we still believe that we're in the ballpark of our net, uh, net estimated interest costs of say somewhere around a million, I'm rounding. Um, we're, we're very pleased to report that we do have three very strong bids that we are in the process of evaluating closely with staff. But, uh, we, we were able to get some strong bids, and we'll be making a recommendation to the county probably over the next few days, probably at the latest on Monday. So I did want to provide you with an update from our May ninth and May tenth relative to the market, generally speaking, and, uh, how we currently see things continuing to shake out as it relates to the financing plan that we thoroughly discussed with the board, uh, during our study sessions. Um, I'm going to go through one more slide, and then of course, we're open for any questions of the board. Uh, we shared this, uh, with the board. Here's, here's where we stand. We've made a lot of progress um, since May ninth, May tenth. Uh, as mentioned to you, we hope to select an institution shortly to finalize our negotiations. Um, as you know, um, our next Board of Supervisor meeting is currently scheduled for June twenty-first, which is a special meeting. And we want to thank staff and the board for establishing this special meeting, which is statutory-driven and has to be two weeks from today. So we want to thank you for that. We know we're in the summer session, but that allows us to comply with the state statute. So in between now and the twenty-first, so we have a couple of weeks. As mentioned, we're going to be finalizing the terms and conditions, selecting a vendor, selecting an institution, and moving towards a closing. And, um, with the approval of the Board of Supervisors on the twenty-first, and it's very important, I know there's, it's summer session, that at that meeting that we have a four-oh or a five-oh vote, so that we can go ahead and close by the end of the fiscal year, which as you know, is important to the county. So this calendar outlines our next steps, and we feel very confident, uh, at the moment that everything's coming together as originally planned. Uh, we would then close the transaction. At the moment, we have a closing at or around June twenty-eighth. We may move that a little bit. So with that, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to, uh, be a little repetitive from our study sessions, but I hope that was helpful. And myself, uh, and Paul Gales were certainly available for any questions of the board. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Uh, members of the board, I believe this is scheduled as a public hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So with that, first, I, I, I do have a couple of questions, uh, and then I'll ask if the board has any questions or comments, and then I'll open it up to the members of the public. Um, my question is, and is, uh, I wanted to make sure that, um, uh, you, Mark, and, uh, just legal have, uh, our bond counsel have been in touch with our county attorney's office. I want to make sure, um, that the county attorney is uh, on top of this as well in terms of overseeing it to make sure it's consistent and the methodology is consistent with Arizona law and with our, our procedures before we move forward. So Heather, I know you're on, so I want to make sure that you have been, uh, you or the county attorney has been in contact with, um, uh, the, uh, bond counsel and also Mark on this.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Yes, I have been in touch with Mr. Gales, who, uh, kindly sent me a lot of information about, um, these issues. I have reviewed the statutes and confirmed, um, that we are in compliance with all of our statutory notice requirements. Um, as to the actual issues relating to the bond, as I'm sure every, uh, member of this board is aware, that's why you have relied on outside bond counsel, because they are clearly the experts. We are not experts in this area. Um, so we would, you know, defer to them as to their advice as to the bonds, but I have been in touch with them, yes.
All right. And, and of course, it's important for us as the board, just to make sure that County Attorney's Office has been in sync and and, um, and is, has no problems with us proceeding on this from a legal, from a legal perspective.
Yes, we appreciate that, Chair, and, and we are, um, in contact with bond counsel, and, and it appears that they are leading you in the right direction.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. So, and thank you, Mark, for your review again. I know it has somewhat review, but it is, uh, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and we want to make sure that uh, we, the board, have done our due diligence to make sure we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's as we move forward on this. This is important for our, our, our community, and they want to know that we, the board, have done our due diligence. So, thank you. Other comments, questions, members of the board?
Yes, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I was curious, I just want to confirm that, that we can use the interest accrued from the bonds to pay off our interest payments, because the way it's set up now and being presented, it looks like a great deal. At the end of the day, only costing us eight hundred and you know, almost a million dollars in, in, after doing this whole process. Just want to make sure that we can use our, uh, our interest to pay off interest, because somewhere I had heard that that might not be allowed. And so I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and ask the question before we move forward. Thank you.
So, uh, Deputy County Attorney, you have any problem with that?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, if I could jump in on that, uh.
Sure. Uh, Paul, uh, uh, is it Paul?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It's hard for me to see here. I got a little screen, so, uh, Paul, and then we'll hear from Heather. So yes, Paul.
Yes, th- thank you for the question, and the answer is, it is allowed to use the, the interest earnings for that purpose. It's actually the preferred route. So maybe, yes, it's okay from a legal perspective. Thank you for checking. Great question.
Thanks, Paul. Heather, you have any problems with that?
No, again, we would rely on bond counsel for their expertise in this area.
Then we're happy to, to, as long as you two are talking and you're happy, we're happy. How's that? So, thank you. Uh, all right. Any other comments or questions from the board before we open this up to a public hearing?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, Supervisor Ryan.
Uh, thank you, and as noted by, uh, Vice Chair. Excuse me. This is very innovative financing. Um, uh, we've already seen, um, before, we knew the interest rates, uh, might fluctuate slightly. And it's only slightly. It's still, um, uh, very, uh, good use of money, uh, and very good financial, uh, methodology uh, that is being re- recommended. Uh, and so I did want to note that before we get into the public hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your comments, Supervisor Ryan. Any other comments, questions, or I'll open this up to a public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
So I just want to add that during the presentation we did, it was presented to, as to what other counties do and in the state and how they handle the bonds. So I just want to, um, just add that and trying to see, um, how, how, um, other counties have been able to approach the, um, in their bonding and financing. Uh, so I just want to add that and just really trying to, um, look at the number of years and what, and we really looked at trying to see how, what would it specifically be used for? And this is what was recommended, and it's very targeted, um, how these dollars are going to be used. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions before we open it up to our public hearing? And then, of course, we will have opportunities at the, at the close of the public hearing to make further comments. So any other comments or questions, members of the board?
Ju- just one comment. Sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair.
No problem.
The public hearing will be opened at this meeting and will be closed, um, at the meeting of June twenty-first. So.
Thank you.
Folks will be able to submit comments, written comments and oral comments up to and including, uh, the, the June twenty-first meeting. So, thank you.
So would you please say that again, Paul, because this is new information to us. So please explain, uh, the process on the public hearing.
Sure. So the, the public hearing will be opened at this meeting in connection with this, what we call eleven-three ninety-one hearing in reference to the statute. And the statute also requires that the public hearing remain open until the board takes action on the resolution to approve the financing. So that's currently scheduled for June twenty-first. So the public hearing will remain open during that time. There is a link in the publication and the website notice with respect to the hearing, uh, that includes information on how folks can su- submit written comments that they like.
Very good. Excellent. Uh, any other comments, questions? That's good information for us and members of the board. If you do not have any other questions or comments at this time, per the advice of Legal Counsel Paul Gales, that we are going to open this for the public hearing, members of the, of the, uh, board. Um, we are going to tell you how you can join us right now. However, we are going to remain open for this public hearing until June twenty-second, and you will be able to continue to make comments, uh, like visa via our website. Is that, that's correct?
Yeah, the only clarification is it would be June twenty-first.
I can't read my own writing, Paul. So, thank you. Uh, June twenty-first. Okay, then, members of the public, we are opening our public hearing now. It'll remain open until June twenty-first. At this point, I am going to ask Siri and to explain how members of the community could, if they wanted, join us here today and make a comment, or, uh, you can go on our website and be making your comment via the website.
And I believe Lindsay will be providing that information.
Yes, Lindsay. There she is, our clerk of the board. Lindsay Daly, please let the public know how they can join us here today. Or, uh, we are going to keep this open until June twenty-first. They can go on our website and be able to make comments per the webs, or on the website. So Lindsay, please explain.
Thank you, Chair Horseman. If there's anyone that would like to comment today during the hearing, you can hit the raise hand icon that looks like a hand if you hover towards the bottom of your screen, and it says raise hand. If you click on that, that will raise your hand and allow you, and we will not be notified that you would like to comment. If you've joined by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. And we also have an email that goes to boardcomments@coconino dot az.gov. So anyone can send an email in to provide a comment regarding this public hearing as well.
All right, members of the public, now is the time for you to be heard. Uh, so please join us.
As of now, we do not have any hands raised. We do not have any comments in the board comments inbox.
So this is the final call for tonight. Other, what, though, it will remain open until June twenty-one. So, uh, final call for tonight, uh, for comments to the board.
And there are no hands raised, Chair Horseman.
Very good. So members of the board and members of the public, this will remain open until June twenty-first. Any other comments from our, or comments or questions from board members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a note, and we encourage people, uh, please, uh, make comments, uh, and there will be an opportunity for you to see what is being recommended. And also, uh, we have it as an item of our package. Uh, you should have access to that information as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. So, and, um, I'd like to just make a comment here that. Uh, yes, go ahead Supervisor Bagel. I'll hold off on my comment.
Yes, uh, is there anything else that's going to be publicized anywhere, um, you know, for the people, so they are aware that those, that comment period is open? I don't know if any efforts are going to be made in that realm.
County Manager?
I'm referring to, um, Mark about this, because we do, we do publish it in the Daily Sun. That is our official posting place. The county has determined that to be the official posting place, but we can expand it beyond that, uh, if, if, if that's very good.
And I'm assuming it's on the county website too. Is that right, Steve? So that, yeah.
That's right.
Notices of the county website, and it explicitly has been.
Sir, your audio is.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Siri, sorry.
That's me. Sorry, Lindsay.
I'm sorry, Lindsay. I'm sorry, Lindsay. Lindsay, we can't hear you.
Sorry. Let me get a little closer. It is under the public notices of the county website and that explains, um, that people can comment into the board comments email. So, that is provided there as well.
Supervisor Brigade, does that answer your questions?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, members of the board? All right. So, I do not need to close it. No action is taken at this time. Is that correct, Paul?
That, that is correct, Madam Chair.
Very good. So.
Madam Chair, I have two more final, um, very small comments if I, when appropriate.
Sure, right now would be great, Mark.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, uh, as you know, we're going to meet again on June twenty first. And, um, I was, um, just going to ask the question to make sure that we have a quorum or we have at least a four-on-one vote, which allows us, as you all know, to close the transaction. And so I know it's summertime. The only reason why I ask, I know there's a lot of travel and there's a lot of summertime. But if we don't have that, then, uh, we're unable to close by the end of the fiscal year. So, I just wanted to bring that up relative to schedules and, uh, bring it to the board's attention. I know you're aware of that. I appreciate your understanding of that important matter.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mark, for, uh, for reminding us. Uh, I do intend to be there. It looks like we're going to do it seven thirty in the morning.
That is.
And I appreciate an earlier date because I am delaying my travels, uh, in order to be there for that, uh, board, board meeting. Supervisor, uh, Vasquez, I think that works for you too. Is that correct?
Yes, I ha- I have some personal matters to attend to. My son's having a, a surgery that morning. So, that's why, uh, for me, seven thirty works better because his surgery is afterwards.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. And Supervisor, uh, Fowler and Ryan and Begay, are you going to be able to, to be present at seven thirty on the twenty first?
Yes.
I got thumbs up for Supervisor Fowler.
Okay, that, that's very helpful. That helps us as we negotiate with the purchaser, as you know. As capital commitments are being made, just things of that nature, not to bore you with our side. Um, I'm also going to be on vacation, so bear with me as well. If for some reason I'm unable to dial in, my colleague, Jack Leapers, on the phone. Uh, and Paul will be here and you'll be in very, very good hands and I'll make sure I communicate with staff in the event I'm unable to dial in because I am going international. Um, the last comment I wanted to mention to you is, is I wanted to compliment the board on, on, uh, on having fun together. Uh, and, uh, being lighthearted a little bit with each other. We know you take your business very seriously. I've been in, I've been in hundreds of local government meetings in my career. And it's nice to see that you all enjoy each other and have a little bit of fun. So, I just wanted to throw that out there for whatever it's worth.
All right. That sounds, that sounds like a plan. And next time you need, you need to bring, uh, some Dairy Queen Dilly Bars, okay, Mark?
Okay. You got it. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Supervisor Ryan, I know you need to get going, Supervisor Ryan.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just quickly on, uh, the note, um, I'm tr- I'm going to be in Alaska and I'm trying to find Wi-Fi service. I think it's the one day I was supposed to go to Denali. I might have to give that up. Um, so, but I'm looking.
There's one at a gas station out there.
They're actually in Denali, there are like three or four hotels there that do have great Wi-Fi service.
And they'll give you a password.
And you'll, you'll be able to do it. So.
Right. I see the, the virtue of having you guys explore Alaska.
We were there. We did it, Matt. So, do not, do not miss Denali.
It's.
Don't miss it.
But this, this code is very important also. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. Appreciate that. Members of the board, we are going to move on, on, uh, discussion uh, and possible action to submit policy resolutions for consideration by the, um, National Association of Counties. And I know this is coming up. I think there might be a deadline. If there isn't a deadline, I would really like to hold off on this. But if we need to get this done because there's a deadline on this, uh, then let's proceed.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, before you go on with that, I need to step away from the meeting.
I know. And, and that's one of the reasons Supervisor Ryan, if we do not have to do this tonight, I, I'm supposed to be someplace else too. And if we don't need to be doing this tonight, I would prefer that we hold off till the next board meeting. But if we need to get it done, let's get it done. And Supervisor Ryan, thank you for being there and doing, doing the work for Dark Skies for us.
Thank you. Madam, Madam Chair, just a note, I, I've, we have the resolutions before us. I have no recommendations for changes at this.
Thank you. Thanks Supervisor Ryan. Appreciate that.
I don't have, uh, changes either.
And I don't have changes either.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Yes, there is a deadline. It's June twentieth, um, for NACO. So, that's why we came here, uh, recognizing some other business. So, um, just to note for the record, we did have eight resolutions in the process. Three through the NACO Legislative Conference, which are interim resolutions, and five resolutions adopted last year in Adams County at the NACO Annual Conference. Working with NACO staff, uh, as well as you, Keith did a lot of outreach with you in terms of these, we've, we've gotten down to three resolutions. And so with that, unless there's anything else you'd like to hear on that, uh, we take direction to submit.
I think, uh, at this point, a direction to submit is freely given. If I am wrong, members of the board, speak up now or forever hold your peace. How's that?
We appreciate your work, both of you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Begay.
I think we just need to move forward with it and do the direction. I think, you know, we don't want to be pressing time, um, at the end, trying to a- address it. So, I, I, if they don't have any comments on our changes, uh, I would support that we just move it on.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Anybody disagree with Supervisor Begay? If not, let's move it on. So, thank you very much, Greg and, and, uh, Keith. Really appreciate all your help.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just thank you also to the staff and County Manager's Office who had input on this as well. Really appreciate it. Look forward to a good conference in July.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate your work. Supervisor Ryan, I know you need to get going. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Take care, everybody.
Members of the board, we have one last item, uh, and that's presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-three Coconino County in Emergency Operation Plans as the foundational roles and responsibility document for incident response and recovery activities in Coconino County. Members of the board, we have seen this. Uh, and it has been, uh, um, provided to us. Um, I know that we do have Wes Dyson with us and, uh, Wes, if you can kind of take us through here, uh, in a, a brief, uh, fashion, we'd really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, thank you for your time. I'll be very, very brief. Um, looking back at last year's and the last several years' events and the magnitude of our events, we really wanted to take a quick look at our planning and how our posture is set up to continue to respond to emergency events. A big piece of that is our Coconino County Emergency Operations Plan. So, we contracted with a very experienced, very knowledgeable contractor, EM Partners out of Virginia. We have crafted a new plan. I'm going to ask Chance to walk you through it very, very quickly. Uh, this is a great document. It is one of the best, I believe, in the state at this point. It is in complete alliance with our local and our state and federal partners. So, thank you for your time. The project was brought in on time and is currently slightly under budget. So, we're doing very well. The funding came from DFFM, so there was no cost to the county for this plan, uh, but we're very proud of it. So, I'm going to toss Chance to run through his slides very quickly.
All right. Thank you. Hi, Chance. Good to join us.
Hi, good afternoon.
Let's, let's, let's roll.
Sheriff is here for you. So, I've heard your comments. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be bold, I'll be brief, and I'll be gone for you. I'm Chance Winok with Emergency Management. Uh, today you'll see an achievement in modernization. It's an achievement in bringing incident response and recovery into the twenty-first century. And it's an achievement in making Coconino County a stronger and safer place. An EOP is the foundational roles and responsibilities document for incident response and recovery anywhere in the nation. And we're proud to present our updates for the twenty twenty-three Emergency Operations Plan. You may get, may get sick of hearing roles and responsibilities a little bit throughout this presentation, but I can't stress it enough. That's the foundational component of this document. So, let us continue. When we entered this update with our contractors, Wes mentioned EM Partners, there were three main objectives we wanted to accomplish in modernizing the plan. We thought about what the core requirements of an EOP were and the thresholds that transformed a plan from ornamental to operational. EM and EM Partners arrived at three primary goals. The plan needed to be readable. It needed to align with other plans at the state and federally and need to be able to be operationalized, be able to put into action during an emergency. You'll see how we achieved those goals and how by modernizing this plan, we're able to provide a stronger and safer Coconino County. But before we go any further, I want to recognize the contributions made by our partners, both internal and external, as part of this planning team. We completed these updates in just under six months in anticipation of our upcoming flooding and fire season. This wouldn't have been possible without input from all of our whole community partners. Our planning team, incorporated county governments, local governments, our fire districts, public utilities, VOWAD, and our tribal partners. We know that all these partners have a role to play during emergencies. We want to thank them for their help in developing this plan. First, let's take an overarching view at the changes we've made to the plan. In accomplishing one of our objectives, readability, we had to look at the foundational length and structure of the plan as well as the guidance that contributed to the development of both the old and the new plan. At seven hundred and forty-eight pages, the twenty thirteen plan was just too long for operational use. For reference, that's as long as The Grapes of Wrath, a full-length novel. Now, you may be thinking, well, longer is better, right? Not necessarily. The most current guidance is in favor of constructing an all-hazards plan without a focus on any kind of incident specificity. The reason the twenty thirteen plan was lengthy was because guidance at the time suggested that every hazard have its own annex. This means there was a wildfire annex, a flooding annex, a drought annex, and a terrorism annex, among others. Contemporary incidents discovered that placing the emphasis on our stakeholders rather than the hazards contributed to the best outcomes. So, that's why when we constructed this plan, we prayed to our strengths. And real briefly, I have the old plan here and I'll show you. It's an absolute behemoth. We wanted to make sure that we were able to shorten that and make it more effective. And I think we've accomplished that goal. Looking at the guidance we used to develop this plan, examining the Arizona State Emergency Response and Recovery Plan was our first step. This is the state's EOP and served as the basis for the construction of our own plan. We also looked at FEMA's Comprehensive Preparedness Guide one-on-one, often called CPG one-on-one. This FEMA document not only guided the format of our plan, but also how we facilitated the planning process and built this whole community partnership. The National Preparedness Goal, also referred to as Presidential Policy Directive Eight, created the National Preparedness Goal and set the stage for the proliferation of emergency management. Importantly, we also made sure that our plan aligned with the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System. These often work in tandem with one another. This board recognized the importance of utilizing NIMS and ICS as early as two thousand and five, when the board adopted Coconino County Resolution two thousand and five dash fifty-eight, adopting NIMS for incident response and recovery operations in the county. NIMS remains current today with the twenty seventeen edition giving us our latest guidance. We wanted to make sure that we fulfilled the will and intent of the board in the development of our new plan. Finally, there's the EMAP program, the Emergency Management Accreditation Program. This is an international voluntary accreditation program with sixty-six standards. To be clear, we're not currently seeking EMAP accreditation, but by utilizing many of the sixty-six standards in our plan, we're able to make sure that we're adhering to the industry's best practices and that those are included in our plan. For example, alert and warning is an EMAP standard, and we address that through our emergency notification system and that system's reference in the plan. So, recognizing that all plans draw from the universal guidance offered by FEMA and as we align our plans with the state emergency response and recovery plan, so do our municipalities strive to align their plans with our EOP. We wanted to find a way to illustrate the working relationship all these plans share. Ultimately, we arrived at a concept that was not only operationally accurate, but also artistic and memorable. This was the planning universe, a place where planets, or in our case, plans, align. You'll see that each of these worlds represents a jurisdiction and each of these planets contains the full scope of incident response and recovery documents, including checklists, procedures, policies, and plans. Our goal is to have these planets align when the sun goes supernova, or as Wes likes to say, when the cheese flies off the cracker. The city of Flagstaff is developing their own EOP, also having contracted with EM Partners. We've also begun to develop the EOP for the city of Page. This concept is unique for Arizona and us here in Coconino County, taking the first leap to bring these plans into a greater alignment. However, alignment's only half the battle. So, what did we do to ultimately complete the base plan? Well, we focused on all hazards rather than any kind of incident specificity. We integrated all of our internal and external stakeholders to build whole community integration. We synchronized our plan with other plans as part of the planning universe, as you've seen. We define the roles and responsibilities of our county coordinating departments, which we'll expand on a little bit further in this presentation. We emphasized the one-county response, an influential concept in our county, and we utilized lessons learned from previous events to develop best practices for the future. All of this together works to build the whole plan, a holistic combination meant to work in unison with one another. So, these are the primary departments responsible for incident response and recovery. They bring substantial resources to bear in the case of an emergency or disaster. This isn't to say that every department doesn't have a role in an emergency. They absolutely do. And our plan acknowledges that all of our departments perform critical functions during disasters. These departments' roles and responsibilities, however, are explicitly defined in the plan. The annexes state what these departments do, but almost equally as important, what they don't do. The battle lines against disaster will be drawn before the incident even begins. To construct these annexes, we sat down with each of these workshops and they developed their own roles and responsibilities as they saw them. Departments will do what they do best. Everyone has a role to play. We play to the strengths here. Upon adoption of this plan, emergency management is going to have the heads of these departments promulgate their annex and ensure that each department is prepared to fulfill their functions before an emergency occurs. All of this ties back to the greater theme of roles and responsibilities. So, plans are great, but how did this planning level roles and responsibilities translate into operational procedures and accomplishments? This is where checklists come into play. Many of us dread checklists, often they're developed by a manager with no real understanding of the position being performed. With our checklist, we wanted to change that, and we did. We sat down with our office and other stakeholders who performed the section chief positions in the Emergency Operations Center and developed checklists that reflected day-to-day responsibilities of these functions during an EOC activation. By having these checklists, we're working to ensure that there's a seamless transition in the EOC for anyone stepping into that role. And the template we've developed for these checklists can serve as a springboard for anyone working to develop their own checklist in the EOC. In developing this plan, we wanted to examine the whole picture and acknowledge the impact our plans and procedural guidance would have on operational personnel. Developing these checklists went a long way to bridge that gap. We're confident that having these documents in alignment is going to streamline operations and maximize our efficiency during incident response and recovery efforts. So, now that we've covered this plan from head to toe, where does that ultimately mean for Coconino County? So, just as the sun is rising in our cover photo, a new dawn is rising over the EOP. This photo was graciously provided to us by Dave Wilson, a local Arizona photographer. And it's greatly thematic in what we were able to accomplish as part of this plan. The sun is setting on the old plan and the sun is rising over a new one. But twenty twenty-three EOP is shorter. The roles and responsibilities listed therein are stronger and Coconino County is ultimately safer as a result of the new plan. Thank you for your time today and I hope you'll move to approve and adopt the twenty twenty-three Coconino County Emergency Operations Plan. I'd be more than happy to take any questions you may have.
Chance, thank you so much for your very, very thorough and, um, you know, uh, complete review on the Emergency Operations Plan and excellent PowerPoint. So, thanks, Chance, for doing this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, members of the board, any comments or questions on this?
And, and beautiful photo, yes.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Supervisor. We're, we're very thankful that Dave Wilson, uh, let us use that photo for this presentation.
It is, uh, amazing to take a huge document and just have the, say the same thing in just a fewer pages and just the, um, be able to do, be more efficient. So, um, I'm just really impressed with all the activities the, um, emergency management is doing. I really like those zones that you created also throughout the whole county. So, just really appreciate all your work and your thoughtfulness, um, throughout the county.
So just really appreciate all your work and your thoughtfulness um throughout the county and how you're approaching everything. So thank you so much. Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. And yes, we're very Wes Dyson and his team have done such a great job uh for us, not only in terms of emergency response, but now uh in terms of their recommendation on this operation plan. Really appreciate everything you all do for us. And you're right, Coconino County is safer as a result, so thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Supervisor Begay.
Yes, um I just want to say, reiterate the same thing. I think, you know, um they're doing a real good job, Wes Dyson and his staff, and I really greatly appreciate them. Um there's so many good things that are happening in the county, and I really greatly appreciate, you know, the um under Mr. Peru's leadership and um Sue and Andy and others. So I just want to say, I really greatly appreciate all of you guys. So and and you know, yes, you know, um Coconino County sets a lot of examples, I think, you know, by just reading things and looking at things, you know. Uh what a great team effort and a lot of teamwork that goes on and 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 that's what's going to make things happen. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Supervisor Begay. Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh first off, I wanted to commend the the emergency management team on consolidating and creating a plan that's more workable. Uh definitely can tell that the lessons from the last couple of years of so many fires and floods have been implemented and and it put into this plan. You can see in the streamlining and some of the emergency uh evacuation zones and whatnot. And so just wanted to to come um command and and say thank you to the MS team, the emergency uh management team for uh for all your hard work in putting together this this new plan that is more workable and usable, user-friendly for for not just um our county folks, but for all our partners as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I would entertain a motion uh to approve the Co- Coconino County Emergency Operation Plan as presented uh by Wes Dyson and our emergency management team. Do I have a motion? Some more. I have a motion by Supervisor Fowler. I have a second by Supervisor Begay. All those in favor of approving the new efficient and streamlined uh Coconino County Emergency Operation Plan, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Uh and again, uh Chance, thank you very much for your hard work on this and your presentation. And Wes, as always, you just really knock it out of the park for us here in Coconino County. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Members of the board, we are now at the end of our meeting. We can adjourn, and I want to thank everybody uh for their uh attention and and hard work and our staff. Uh thank you so much. I know getting through that preliminary budget uh can be long and but so important, long and tedious, but so important. So thank our staff for all their work and thank my colleagues for their careful consideration. Really appreciate it. Members of the board, we are adjourned. Thank you.
But Chair Horseman?
Chair. Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought that we had skipped forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty in order to accommodate Supervisor Ryan. Did?
Did we? I'm going back. I'm sorry.
I'm counting on Lindsay to pipe up, but I thought he I thought he asked us to skip a couple of items so that.
Well, the only one I thought he asked us to skip was fifty-one, and we withdrew one.
I apologize.
Yeah, okay. Am I am I wrong, Lindsay? Are we okay?
You are correct. Yes, you're correct, Chair Horseman. You guys did forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad somebody paid attention to me. Somebody needs to make sure I'm 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 doing it right. So thank you so much. And members of the board, you all have a great night. Again, thank you all. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone. Bye-bye.